Buenos dias, colegas. El comité de todo está de vuelta de recesión. Estamos en el artículo 230-36 del proyecto de sustitución. Estamos en la tercera ronda del comité de todo. Entretener cambios. Senador Pérez, usted es reconocido.
Gracias, Madam presidenta. Buenos días a mis colegas. Este amendment que me gustaría proponer está notado en la línea 21, página 11. Se trata de agregar una nueva sección D. Se dice que todos los agentes implementando este capítulo deberán undergo la disclosure y la capacitación de confidencialidad y deberán cumplir con la ley de Guam. Así que creo que este amendment se habla por sí mismo. Creo que además de requerir que la confidencialidad y las leyes de no descubrimiento estén en place y la implementación, creo que lo más importante es la formación para respaldar lo que podría ser información muy sensible y muy personal. Así que es por eso que propongo este amendment. Después de revisar este amendment, veo que probablemente debería estar en la sección 13.313. Así que estoy permitiendo a Legal hacer esas correcciones, ponerlo en esa sección y permitirles hacer correcciones técnicas.
Muchas gracias. En el amendment, senador Brown, usted es reconocido.
Muchas gracias, Madam presidenta. Solo quería preguntar si el sponsor respondería a la pregunta. Ciertamente no tengo ningún problema con respecto al amendment propuesto. Solo quería inquirir quién sería el que realizara la formación. ¿Son ya, ya saben, los recursos ya están ahí para proporcionar la formación? Quiero decir, sé que tenemos formación de ética y cosas así, pero para el propósito específico del amendment, que, como dije, no tengo ningún problema con él, ciertamente hay un uso de ello, pero ¿hay infraestructura en place para tener realmente la formación disponible para el personal necesario que facilitará el proceso de pago?
Gracias, senador Brown. Senador Pérez, ¿se puede darle a la pregunta?
Sí, sí, Madam presidenta. Así que según este proyecto, la implementación se va a manejar por el Departamento de Administración y así se les ha otorgado medio millón de dólares al Departamento de Administración. Ellos mismos han undergo el mismo tipo de formación cuando se trata de manejar los cuentos. Así que me siento segura de que podrían implementar esto.
Senador Brown, ¿satisface su pregunta?
No, no tengo ningún problema. Quiero decir, ¿tienen tal tipo de cursos disponibles? Solo quiero saber si está en place o si es algo que tienen que prepararse. No estoy seguro de si esta es parte de sus clases de formación actuales que ofrecen.
Senador Pérez.
Podría inquirir con el director, pero en otras agencias como el Departamento de Reveniente y Taxación es la agencia que implementa tal formación para su personal.
Vale. Gracias. Apprecito la respuesta del autor y gracias, Madam presidenta.
Muchas gracias, senador Brown. En el amendment, para clarificar, esta es ahora en la página 5, para agregar una nueva sección a 13.303. En el amendment, senador Sinagastin.
Madam presidenta, ¿puede decirme una vez más ese discurso? ¿Está diciendo que va a ir a la sección 303? Antes de que hable de la modificación.
Sí, el autor del amendment mencionó que está permitiendo que las correcciones técnicas sean realizadas por el consejo legal para que este amendment esté puesto en 13.303.
Lo siento. Si puedo añadir algo. Así que sí, mi intención es ponerlo en una sección diferente a lo que está listado y voy a enviar el amendment actualizado. Así que si miras la sección 13.313, el título es "información de reclamo de privacidad". Así que esa es la sección en la que intento ponerlo porque es relevante.
Madam presidenta.
Actualmente.
¿Quiero saber algo? ¿Estamos mirando la versión sustituida? Porque en mi página 5, en 13.303, está el período de cierre de reclamos y avisos.
Sí, estoy haciendo una corrección. Así que si... Vamos a tomar un momento de recesión y sacar el nuevo amendment a todos. Estamos en recesión. El comité de todo está de vuelta de recesión. Senador Pérez, usted es reconocido.
Gracias, Madam presidenta. Quisiera retirar ese amendment y presentar un nuevo amendment.
En el motion para retirar el amendment, no hay objeciones. El amendment retirado. Senador Pérez, usted es reconocido.
Gracias, Madam presidenta. Así que este amendment, propongo el mismo amendment pero en una sección diferente. Está en la línea 22, página 11. Se trata de agregar una nueva sección a la sección 13.313 y esa es la sección que trata de la privacidad de la información de reclamo. Y lo que este amendment haría básicamente requerir la no descubrimiento y undergo la formación y la capacitación de confidencialidad y cumplir con la ley de Guam para todos los agentes implementando este capítulo.
Muchas gracias. En el amendment, senador Sinagastin, usted es reconocido.
Gracias, Madam presidenta. Yo respondo a este amendment incluso aunque el señor Byrne mencionó que su personal haya undergo la formación de descubrimiento, pero esto asegura que tiene que estar en registro, que fueron a la formación de descubrimiento y confidencialidad. Entonces, estos tendrán paz de ánimo porque, como Guam es muy pequeño, siempre hay una telefoneralaya, todo el mundo sabe lo que pasó antes del final del día. Pero con esto, les recuerda la confidencialidad de lo que están realizando. Gracias.
Muchas gracias, senador Sinagastin. En el amendment, ¿hay objeciones? No hay objeciones. El amendment pasa. Senador Pérez, usted es reconocido. No hay más amendamientos. Gracias. Muchas gracias, senador Pérez. Senador Tai De Gui. No hay. Senador Blas.
Gracias, Madam presidenta. Madam presidenta, tengo un par de amendamientos para proponer. Lo primero, Madam presidenta, ya ha sido subido a la drive. He básicamente ordenado a los policías no poder, no hay necesidad de fotocopia esto para salvar una árbol. Es simple, es un amendment de una previa modificación que fue proponido por el buen parlamentario y luego modificado por el buen señor de Jigu. Esto es básicamente un amendment en la página 7, línea 18 a 23, y se refiere a los fondos de sección 30 y la discusión de que queríamos cambiar el palabra "hará" a "deberá". Así que mi amendment aquí es cambiar ese término de "hará". Y decimos, "Los fondos de sección 30 se han hecho disponibles en FY2023 deberán ser utilizados para reembolsar el fondo general para recuperar las cantidades autorizadas por la sección, como identificado en el reporte de transferencia de fondos..." Así que es cambiar el término "hará".
Gracias, senador Blas. En el amendment, senador Brown, usted es reconocido.
Muchas gracias, Madam presidenta. Obviamente estoy mucho de acuerdo y he pedido al senador Blas que sea co-sponsor de él en este en particular amendment. Y como elaboré ayer, importa, importa dónde vienen los fondos. Y creo que para reconocer correctamente lo que se desea aquí, reconocer los sufrimientos y desafíos que nuestras personas pasaron durante la guerra, creo que es muy, muy importante que la fuente de financiación última que paga por las reparaciones de guerra venga de la sección 30. Como mencioné ayer, no es la situación más ideal en la que estamos y es muy desafortunado que el gobierno federal no haya dado a nuestras personas la misma equidad que dieron a los estadounidenses japoneses o a los isleños ilusionistas en la trata de sus reparaciones. Pero aquí es donde estamos en este momento y creo que todos reconocemos que probablemente no hay futuro en el Congreso de Estados Unidos de tratar este tema de nuevo. El hecho de que ha tomado tanto tiempo y nuestras personas han esperado tanto tiempo y han llegado tan lejos para estar en la situación en la que estamos. Pero creo que para nosotros como legisladores, lo que tenemos dentro de nuestro control, y ciertamente cuando se tomó la decisión de usar los fondos de sección 30 en el Congreso, no hay razón para que no emulemos ese proceso desde nuestra posición aquí, para dejar ese dinero fuera para que en última instancia la fuente de financiación venga de las manos federales. Viene de los cofres federales para compensar a nuestras personas. Porque no estoy muy de la posición, como he dicho repetidamente, no veo dónde está la justicia cuando aquellos que han sido víctimas como resultado de la guerra terminan pagando por su propia compensación. Y si no lo vinculamos a los fondos de sección 30, y eso es exactamente lo que estamos haciendo, especialmente en un momento, Madam presidenta, cuando hay tantas otras necesidades de nuestras personas ahora. No podemos proteger a nuestras personas ahora. No se sienten seguros en la comunidad en la que viven. No podemos proporcionar una educación adecuada para nuestros hijos y estamos tomando dinero de esa botella. Y ahora mismo, tal vez el dinero está fluindo debido a la compensación federal de esta pandemia desafortunada, pero sabemos que no va a durar. Creo que en toda justicia, honrar y reconocer la dignidad de nuestras personas, que debería venir de fondos federales porque importa. Y para nosotros no hacer eso, no veo cómo nuestras personas obtienen justicia. No veo cómo aquellos que sobrevivieron la guerra y aquellos que han muerto desafortunadamente obtienen justicia. No hay nadie aquí que no haya sido afectado por esto. Ciertamente somos una generación mucho más joven, pero no hay un miembro aquí, estoy seguro, no ellos mismos, no sus padres, sus abuelos que vivieron durante la guerra, tías, abuelos, hermanos. Todos hemos sido afectados a través de ese proceso. Pero estamos aquí ahora. Hemos sido los que han sido electos para confiar en el bolsillo público, el dinero de la gente. Y creo que es muy importante que reconozcamos eso y nuestra responsabilidad para eso y asegurarnos de que el dinero llegue en última instancia a la sección 30, porque ahora mismo es la única vía disponible para nosotros y no hay otra vía. Hemos estado tratando este tema durante tantos años. Como regresamos al ex congresista Wampat, ya saben, congresista Ben Blas, congresista Underwood, congresista Madalena Bredalio y ciertamente ahora con congresista Mike Sennicola. Ha sido una larga y aparcada ruta para nuestras personas y ciertamente queremos ver una resolución. Así que estoy muy de acuerdo con este amendment y co-sponsor de él con el senador Frank Blas y por favor, estoy pidiendo, estoy implorando a mis colegas a hacer lo correcto y asegurarse de que la compensación última para nuestras personas viene del dinero de la sección 30 y en última instancia a través de este proceso del gobierno federal. Con eso, Madam presidenta, gracias por la oportunidad de comentar sobre este amendment.
Muchas gracias, senador Brown. En el amendment, senador Pérez, usted es reconocido.
Gracias, Madam presidenta. Fue durante el testimonio del comité de todo proporcionado por el director Byrne que están tratando de determinar cuánto dinero hay en el fondo del Departamento de Tesoro, considerando que ha habido 40 millones que se han recogido durante los años. Si solo se han utilizado 10 millones, entonces potencialmente hay 30 millones restantes en ese cuenta. Y ese cuenta fue configurado para el único propósito de premiar a los sobrevivientes de reclamos de guerra. Y estoy de acuerdo con este amendment porque siento que sigue el propósito de usar esos fondos. Una cosa que me gustaría agregar es que tal vez hacer, hacer que Legal haga correcciones sobre este amendment, porque estoy mirando el anterior amendment que pasó, no es completamente consistente con lo que pasó antes, pero estoy de acuerdo con el amendment de cambiar "hará". Gracias.
Muchas gracias, senador Pérez. En el amendment, el amendment de Blas, el senador Turlahi, seguido por el senador Sinagastin.
Gracias, Madam presidenta. Solo estoy tratando de hacer mi cabeza con la semántica de decir que estamos tomando el dinero de la sección 30 y eso trae más justicia, porque durante la historia de Guam nadie ha dicho que eso trae justicia a Guam, porque ese es el dinero de Guam. Es de Guam por los impuestos. Y es, y odio que la legislatura ponga en el registro y ponga en escritura que creemos ahora que esto es justicia. Si estamos diciendo que no podemos, que no deberíamos, que no es justo pagar por nuestros propios reparaciones de guerra, entonces no deberíamos apartarse de eso y no usar semánticas para decir que la sección 30, ya saben, técnicamente nadie estaba de acuerdo con eso cuando el Congreso decidió que iban a tomarlo de nuestros propios fondos de sección 30. Todos se levantaron y dijeron, unidos, eso no es justicia, eso no es justo, que nosotros, las personas de Guam, vamos a pagar reparaciones de guerra a partir de nuestros propios fondos de sección 30 en lugar de de otra fuente. Y así no me gusta la semántica de esto, que ahora entramos y decimos que esto es justicia. No lo es. Y sabemos cuando creamos nuestro propio programa de reparaciones de guerra local, nosotros somos Guam tratando de traer algún tipo de compensación, no justicia, porque la justicia no fue realizada. Estamos tratando de abrir un periodo de cierre que fue negado por el gobierno federal, encima del negar fondos que vienen del gobierno federal. Así que solo estoy muy preocupada que, nuevamente, revertimos esta política que ha estado durante mucho tiempo, que las personas de Guam están exigiendo verdadera justicia, que viene de verdaderas fuentes federales, no de nuestro propio dinero. Y este cambio es significativo en que dice, "La moneda futura de la sección 30 deberá reemplazar este exceso de fondos fiscales del año 21 que hemos designado para ser utilizados". Porque cuando hacemos eso, si le decimos al Departamento de Administración, "No preocupéis el dinero que gastan en FY21 que no es apropiado ahora mismo", lo que significa que está flotando libre allí para que sea usado por el Departamento de Administración para cualquier propósito que puedan encontrar legal fuera del control de la legislatura, pensé que eso es lo que estábamos tratando de evitar, ese libre gasto. Y si queremos limitarlos a cómo gastan ese exceso de 62 millones de dólares en FY21 ingresos, entonces no deberíamos decir, "No preocupéis, reembolsaremos eso y luego tenéis el libre reino de nuevo". Creo que eso es un error. Así es como no fuimos capaces de tener ningún impacto en la expensión de los ingresos de FY20, a pesar de que estábamos tratando de decir que vamos a poner 10 millones en el siguiente piso en el hospital, lo negaron. Estamos tratando de cambiar ese patrón. Estamos tratando de tener entrada en la expensión de los fondos de sección 30, que hacemos ahora para servicios críticos del gobierno, y podemos ponerlos en reclamos de guerra, sí, fondo general, todos están mezclados, van a ir a todas estas cosas que encontramos críticas. Pero no creo que deberíamos rellenar los fondos de FY21 que estamos dictando que los utilicen. No deberíamos, porque luego abdicarán de control sobre esos fondos nuevamente. Y ese es el error que hemos cometido en el pasado y no deberíamos repetirlo. Deberíamos, como legislatura, mantener los controles y los chequeos que intentamos hacer con el amendment original y no reembolsarlos por usar estos fondos. Ya saben, hemos visto, ellos encuentran dinero en su, ya saben, están pagando tasas, están reclutando por encima del nivel, en todo el gobierno. Necesitamos hacer nuestro trabajo, necesitamos mantener los chequeos y las balances, necesitamos mantener estricta la responsabilidad sobre esos ingresos de exceso. Gracias, Madam presidenta.
Muchas gracias, Madam presidenta. Reconizo al autor del amendment para hacer algunas clarificaciones sobre la lectura del amendment. Como saben, colegas, esto no ha sido descrito, imprimido, pero está en su drive Google Drive y el autor hará algunas clarificaciones.
Gracias, Madam presidenta. Madam presidenta, está bien, en este amendment, necesitamos, necesitamos este amendment o el cuerpo de, 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 ya saben, que está en este amendment para reflejar lo que ha finalmente sido aprobado y aprobado por este cuerpo. Y así, si están mirando esto en su drive Google, un par de lugares, en la segunda línea del amendment donde dice que 10 millones se apropiaron de forma acerca de la general fundo de FY2021. La FY2021 no debería estar allí porque en el anterior amendment eso fue exagerado. Y luego la siguiente línea, dice los ingresos de FY2021 al Departamento de Administración, el Departamento de Administración no debería estar allí porque eso también fue exagerado. Así que solo para asegurarme de que estemos consistentes con lo que ya ha sido aprobado por este cuerpo.
Muchas gracias, senador Blas, por esas clarificaciones para reflejar los amendments previamente hechos al proyecto. Senador Tai De Gui, usted es reconocido.
Señor presidente, Madam presidenta. ¿Puedo tener un minuto solo para que pueda mirar eso en el drive Google? Porque sé que lo acabo de bajar ahora mismo, así que está en la línea, okay, lo tengo aquí, es la línea 10, 10 y 11, página 7. Oh, no, no, no.
Estamos en el amendment a la línea 18 a 23, página 7, letra B.
Okay. Dijo que estaba en el drive Google, Madam presidenta, y estoy tratando de buscarlo en el drive Google.
Está en el drive Google titulado SB230FBJL1823P7.
Okay, lo encontré aquí. Gracias, Madam presidenta, por la oportunidad de, oh, espera, empecemos la llamada. Muchas gracias, Madam presidenta, por la oportunidad de hablar en favor de este, de No creo que haya alguien que no esté de acuerdo en que la verdadera justicia vendría si este financiamiento a nuestros reclamos de guerra se hiciera en dos cosas. Uno, todos los que experimentaron la guerra deberían tener algún tipo de compensación, lo mismo que en Japón, lo mismo que en Filipinas, lo mismo que en otras naciones, que se daba una compensación por las atrocidades que se produjeron durante la guerra. El segundo es que el financiamiento debería venir del gobierno federal o de ese país, pero espera, creo que Japón estaba dispuesto a ayudar a pagar por eso. Pero Estados Unidos les perdonó y dijo, "No, está bien, lo harán". But the United States forgave them and said, no, it's okay, we'll handle our own issues on, in, you know, Guam. But they didn't. I remember in the thirtieth Guam Legislature, when the opportunity came to pay war claimants, those who were alive. And the congressperson at that time said, no, it has to be everyone or nothing at all. And it was just her decision, there was no phone call to the legislature or to the governor, it was just a decision made by one person. Then we come to today, where there was, not to today, but then we came where there was an opportunity that, okay, so many of our manu, so many of our war claimants have passed away, we need to do something now. So I asked those war claimants, I've asked individual, I asked my father, I have asked my uncles, who were all, in, during the war, had carried mines, had watched their cousin blow up in front of them, and asked him, would you rather see this being resolved and paid now regardless if it's coming from the federal government or from government of Guam? And he said, yeah, too many people have died already. I've asked other war claimants and they said, all said the same, not one of them said, no, let's wait until it comes directly from the federal government. So that's what happened. And I think that the source of revenue from Section 30 is, in a way, coming from federal government, even though it's taxes that are owed to this island from military residents living here on Guam. Today, we're sitting here in front of this bill that allows those who missed the deadline to allow them the opportunity again, for one reason or another. And it's the same funding that we used on the last war claimants, those who made the deadline, the same funding source. Now, as we go into this budget, this coming August, we have an opportunity, not just because of this legisla, legislation or this amendment saying shall, but we can ensure, we can ensure that the funding is coming from Section 30 money through a budget. Right now, there's funding in, in the general fund from excess revenue, that's the place where we need to take the money, that's where we can do it. They said they can start making these payments within the next month, that's great, let's do it now, let's not wait. And then when it comes time for budget, even though this says shall, this body has the ability to ensure that we use Section 30 money from the FY23 budget to reimburse now the excess revenue. And then it is this body that can decide that where that reimbursement goes to. We can decide that. Right now, we're just trying to make this bill the same process that happened for those claimants who were on time, who met the deadline. Let's keep that same process going, let's keep a fair, equal playing ground here. We have the authority in the budget bill to ensure that, and I'm pretty sure in August, when August comes around, we're going to ensure that, and we will be the ability to pay for any reimbursement done, we have the ability on where that money is going to go to.
Thank you, Senator Titegui. On the amendment. Senator Sinagustin, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Now, listening to my colleagues, and I support the amendment. But I also agree with what all my colleagues have stated today. When we want to talk about justice, let's just skip that, because this amendment basically maintains consistency with what the previous survivors have been compensated. My, my committee is, is putting together a resolution for my colleagues to request that our congressman asks the United States to reimburse us for all our expenditure, because as we all talk about what we want to see done, I'm taking the next step. I'm going to ask our congressman in a resolution, I'm going to, I'm going to circulate it among our colleagues here, to ask for all reimbursement. Once we're done paying everybody, we're not asking you to figure out what the money's for, it's just to reimburse us for paying what you should have paid. And I think then they'll have a definite number, a definite amount of what was, what was needed. Because back then, when that decision was made by that one sole representative, my father told me, "Aferere nona teningo," you're paying yourself for the injustice that happened to you. But then my father said, let's just get this settled. Then we can always go back to Congress, once the total amount is paid out and done, we can always ask Congress to reimburse us for all our expenditure. And I think that's going to be the proper way to do this. But I, I do agree with all my colleagues about the word justice and all, and everything else, but like the last speaker mentioned, when we go into the budget, we say we'll reimburse the excess use, we, this body will determine where every penny goes. And when anyone wants to say, let's do our job, last time I checked, I've, I've been doing my job since I've been elected, so let's just be consistent and let's just move along. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much, Senator Sinagustin.
Point of personal privilege.
Please state your point of personal privilege.
I'd like to ask to be the first co-sponsor of that resolution. Thank you.
On the amendment. On the amendment, there's been an objection to the amendment. All those in favor, all those in favor of the amendment, amendment fails. Senator Blas, you are still recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, next amendment, as I'd like to proffer, is found on page, it's in the Google Drive, was under SB 230, dash, FBJ, dash, JSSA, L 10, dash, 11, P 7. It's an amendment by myself, as well as Senator Joseph Augustine, to page seven, lines 10 and 11. It's in the, the Section 13.305 Appeals, basically states, objections to the appeals of decisions of the adjudication shall be, add the words filed with, and then the adjudication committee. This was, this is to basically clean up the language as to, in a previous discussion as to where, what, what was this committee that this appeal and decision would go to? So it's, yeah, it's to put, add the words filed with the adjudication committee.
Thank you, Senator Blas. On the amendment. On the amendment, hearing no objections, amendment passes. Senator Blas, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, Madam Chair, that's the only amendments that I really have right now, I just want to be able to use the rest of my time to be able to speak on this and.
Sure.
Let's see, let's see, guys. If there's anybody that's in this room right now, in the hall right now, that basically has this war claims issue too hard, it's probably me. I was there in this legislative body when the whole decision, discussion was about who, how this was going to be paid out and who was going to do this. I was there in the discussions and the, and the concern that we were, we missed out on a great opportunity and we were disappointed in a decision that was haphazardly made with the opportunity, with, with, with the ability to be able to discuss this further. I'll go ahead and expose it now, despite the, at that time, the representative stating that the decision to, to agree with how it was eventually passed in Congress was something that she had to make within two hours. I have an email that says she had two weeks to do it. I had the email that shows that she, they, they had all proffered that to her, you know, with enough time to be able to discuss it with us, but it wasn't. I further remember that the discussion was that the, the use of Section 30 was just going to be a placeholder so that we can bring it in and then we, we'll have the discussion as to where the funding was going to, where we were going to get the, they were going to get the funding to be able to fund the war claims. You know, we talk about, you know, this is for missing, people who missed the deadline. What about those people who missed the opportunity because they were dead before they started So granted that in a, you know, in one of the amendments that is now has been failed, you know, we were talking about semantics and we're talking about whether or not this or that, you're absolutely right, where the money comes from, Yuli Tan Maria, who's waiting for this money, doesn't care. That's just an argument for ourselves to be able to ensure that somehow it's going to get refunded, placed back. I agree and I thank the good senator from, from Jiggle, you know, and as far as the resolution, that when everything is said and done, that we, that there's an effort to push so that we can get reimbursed for that too, without having to take it from Section 30. Section 30, whatever. We're really concerned about where it's coming from right now, Section 30. Businesses are being closed today, or not even open today because of what's going on, because of this so-called state of emergency. We're not going to have the money to be able to do it, so who's, who's going to pay for it? Guess what? It's either going to be Section 30 federal stimulus funds or otherwise. So let's not get wrapped around the axle because of certain, certain things like this. There were different courses of actions that we could have taken to be able to resolve this, but we decided to take this course of action and we're trying to resolve it. We're trying to make lemonade out of the lemons we got. Please, colleagues, let's just get this done, let's get this over with, and let's move forward. Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much, Senator Blas. Senator Terlahi, Peter Terlahi, amendments or comments on the bill? Thank you very much. Senator Sinagustin, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have an amendment, it's listed as SB 230, dash, JSSA, line 26, page 9. And what this amendment does, when you look at page 9, it just, it just strikes majority and put unanimous. The amendment is to ensure that the decision of the family to disclose the information is unanimous, to protect the claimant or descendant's personal ordeal in an effort to maintain privacy. That's all it was for.
Thank you very much, Senator Sinagustin. On the amendment, on the Sinagustin amendment, line 26, page 9, hearing no objections, motion passes. Senator Sinagustin, you are still recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My other amendment is, is SB 230, JSSA, line 6 to 12, page 10. It also strikes out the, the word majority and make it unanimous vote. The same, the same reason I gave for the previous amendment is consistent.
Thank you, Senator Sinagustin. On the amendment, line 6 to 12, page 10. Hearing no objections, amendment passes. Senator Sinagustin, you are still recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. For comments on the bill, this bill originated from a previous bill. We can bring closure to this and we can move on. The survivors want to get compensated, the descend, the descendants, we need to get to that group too. And once we get to group two, then we, I know there's another group that my colleagues have advised me that they'll be pursuing, but let's get past this one. Because if we don't get past this one, we're not going to go anywhere. And the bill that created this bill, this already expired. The administration is ready to roll. Let's make sure they roll it out and they roll it out the way we believe and we fully support on how it should be done. This bill does this with all the amendments. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator Sinagustin. To clarify, the other amendments we have from you in the drive, you're not introducing them.
That, that's all been moved on.
Okay. Thank you very much, Senator Sinagustin. We've completed the third round of amendments and comments on the bill. We'll take a brief recess. The Committee of the Whole is back from recess. Senator Sinagastian, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move to rise from the Committee of the Whole with the recommendation that Bill 230-36 LS, as amended by the Committee on General Government Operation, Appropriation, Housing, and Substitute on the floor and amended in the Committee of the Whole, be placed on the third reading file.
On the motion, hearing no objections, motion passes. We are in recess. Ilha Satoran-Guahan is back from recess. Senator Sinagastian, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I wish to report back to the body after deliberation of Bill 230-36 LS, as amended by the Committee on General Government Operation, Appropriation, Housing, and Substitute on the floor and amended in the Committee of the Whole, that the recommendation of the Committee of the Whole is to place Substitute Bill 230-36 LS on the floor to the third reading file.
On the motion, Senator Brown.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I would like to be able to speak on that motion on the bill.
Senator Brown, the motion is not debatable, so you can speak on this bill during the extension of remarks.
Madam Speaker, I'm sorry, I guess procedures have changed here. I mean, what is to prohibit us from speaking on the floor in the bill after rising Committee of the Whole? I don't see anything in our rules that limit all discussions only to Committee of the Whole and then therefore we're denied when we go back on the session floor to be able to speak on the bill.
Point of order, we could hear the ruling of the presiding officer. We'll take a moment's recess.
I wish to report back to the body after deliberation of Bill 230-36 LS, as amended by the Committee on General Government Operation, Appropriations and Housing, and substituted on the floor and amended in the Committee of the Whole that the recommendation of the Committee of the Whole is to place substitute bill 230-36 LS on the floor to the third reading file.
On the motion, Senator Brown?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I would like to be able to speak on that motion on the bill.
Senator Brown, the motion is not debatable. So you can speak on this bill during the extension of a remark.
I, Madam Speaker, I'm sorry, I guess procedures have changed here. I mean, what is to prohibit us from speaking on the floor in the bill after rising Committee of the Whole? I don't see anything in our rules that limit all discussions only to Committee of the Whole, and then therefore we're denied when we go back on the session floor to be able to speak on the bill.
Point of order, we could hear the ruling of the presiding officer.
We'll take a moment's recess. Ilhaes La Torre Guahan is back from recess. There was a point of order raised and asked for a ruling. The report back from the Committee of the Whole according to Rule 102D is not debatable. Are there any objections to the motion? Objection has been made. All those in favor? Is the objection to the rule of the chair or is the objection to the original motion? Senator San Agustin, please restate your motion.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I wish to report back to the body after deliberation of Bill 230-36 LS, as amended by the Committee on General Government Operation, Appropriations and Housing, and substituted on the floor and amended in the Committee of the Whole that the recommendation of the Committee of the Whole is to place substitute bill 230-36 LS on the floor to the third reading file. That is the motion.
The motion is to place the bill in the third reading file. Are there any objections? Senator Blas, you are recognized.
Point of information, Madam Chair. So the motion is just basically to recognize that there is going to be a motion to put it into third reading, or is it, is that as?
The motion is to place the bill as substituted and further amended in the Committee of the Whole into the third reading file. That is the motion we are entertaining now.
Okay, along those, that motion, ma'am, there's a continuing motion on this bill. As it was presented on the floor, the motion was, okay, to place it in third reading with the opportunity to discuss.
Yes, and the rule of the chair was that there is no discussion on the bill. The bill, the motion is not debatable.
It's not, Madam Chair, what I'm getting, my point of information is not all members of the body had the opportunity to speak on the bill prior to it going to the Committee of the Whole. Committee of the Whole is a separate entity. Now that it is brought back to the floor, to the body, before the body can decide on what to do as a result of the recommendation from the committee, this body as individual members should have the opportunity to speak on the bill. We didn't have that opportunity prior to it going to the Committee of the Whole.
Thank you, Senator Blas. The opportunity was given in the Committee of the Whole for comment and amendments in the third round.
That's in the Committee of the Whole, Madam Chair.
The motion on the floor is not debatable.
I'm bringing this as a point of information, Madam Chair.
Point of order, Madam Chair.
State your point of order, Speaker Trelawky.
Thank you. So according to our rules, it is not debatable. It was automatic that we convened into Committee of the Whole because it was an appropriations bill. We did that, and our rules also state that the recommendation made by the Committee of the Whole upon reporting back to the legislature are not debatable. The Committee of the Whole may only make recommendations to the body relating to the bill or resolution or other matter under consideration by the Committee of the Whole and any amendments thereto. Such recommendations of the Committee of the Whole may not be further amended or debated. If we, if the legislature fails to follow the recommendations of the Committee of the Whole, the bill or resolution or other matter under consideration automatically dies and goes to the inactive file as provided in Section 1.02F-10.
Thank you, Speaker Trelawky.
On the matter of my point of information, Madam Chair.
Yes, please state your point of information.
My point of information is, Madam Chair, while it went to the Committee of the Whole, that is a separate entity from the body as a, as separate entities. We should have the opportunity as separate entities outside of the Committee of the Whole to continue to, to discuss them. It's not a matter of debating the recommendation to send it down. This is in furtherance of what the initial motion was to bring this, to bring this bill onto the floor. It's for a discussion to bring it to third reading, I mean, third reading and then to Part of that discussion is the Committee of the Whole. That is not the entire discussion.
Thank you very much, Senator Blas. Again, according to our rules, we were in the Committee of the Whole, and according to Rule 1.02D, number nine, recommendations of the Committee of the Whole, a motion to rise from the Committee of the Whole must be carried by a vote of eight members and must contain a recommendation to Ilhaes La Torre Guahan. Said recommendation need not be approve or reject the bill or resolution. Thank you very much, Senator Blas. Again, according to our rules, we were in the Committee of the Whole and according to Rule 1.02D number nine, recommendations of the Committee of the Whole, a motion to rise from the Committee of the Whole must be carried by a vote of eight members and must contain a recommendation to Ilhaes La Torre Guahan. Said recommendation need not be approve or reject the bill or resolution or other matter under consideration. The recommendations made by the Committee of the Whole upon reporting back to Ilhaes La Torre Guahan are not debatable. The Committee of the Whole may only make recommendations to the body relating to the bill or resolution or other matter under consideration by the Committee of the Whole and any amendments thereto. Such recommendation of the Committee of the Whole may be further amended or debated. If Ilhaes La Torre Guahan fails to follow the recommendations of the Committee of the Whole, the bill or resolution or other matter under consideration automatically dies and goes to the inactive file as provided in Section 1.02F10.
Thank you very much for the iteration of that the second time. Again, it is not, this is not a debate on the recommendation. This is an opportunity to discuss which the chair had already initially allowed when the introduction of Bill 230 onto the floor. The motion was to move the bill to thirty, to the third reading and would like to discuss it. This is an argument about the discussion, not about the debate, not about the recommendation from the Committee.
Thank you very much, Senator Blas. The body did decide to resolve into the Committee of the Whole. We then rose from the Committee of the Whole. If you are asking for another opportunity to debate the bill, you will need a notwithstanding provision at this time. So if you would like to make that motion.
Okay, I rose here as a point of information. Now I'm going to go to notwithstanding the House rules. I would like the opportunity to be able to further discuss Bill 230.
Okay, there is a motion on the floor, notwithstanding the rules, to continue discuss, debate on Bill 230 as reported out by the Committee of the Whole. Senator Trelaw, Senator Rigel, you are recognized.
Point of order, Madam Speaker. You must dispense with the first motion first before you can entertain this other motion.
Thank you very much, Senator Rigel. On the motion to place Bill 230 as reported out by the Committee of the Whole substituted and further amended, are there any objections? Hearing no objections.
On basis of being able to understand what the motion is, after this motion is being placed, is there still going to be that opportunity to be able to discuss?
Not at this time, Senator Blas.
Then I object.
There has been an objection to place Bill 230 into the third reading file. All those in favor of placing the bill, please raise your hand. Motion passes. Senator Sinagastin? Thank you. Speaker Trelawky, we are now in motions. I'll recognize Speaker Trelawky. I'm sorry, excuse me, Speaker Trelawky.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion, notwithstanding the House rules, to go back to motions, Madam Speaker.
Hearing no objections. We are back in motions. Speaker Trelawky.
Thank you. I would move to place Bill 229-36 LS as substituted by the Committee on Health, Land, Justice, and Culture onto the session agenda in place of Bill 41-36 due to the urgency of the matter. It was placed in the drive several days ago and Bill 229 is an act to amend Section 75A 109C of Chapter 75A Title 21 and Section 4 of Public Law 35-112 and to add a new Chapter 6A of Title 18 Guam Administrative Rules and Regulations relative to complying with legislative and administrative changes required under the settlement agreement made by and between the United States of America and the government of Guam, Chamaro Land Trust Commission and Administrative Director of the Chamaro Land Trust Commission, the United States versus Government of Guam et al., District Court of Guam, Civil Number 17-CV001113, as transmitted to Ilhaes La Torre Guahan by the Chamaro Land Trust Commission.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. On the motion to place Bill Number 229-36 LS as substituted by the Committee on Health, Land, Justice, and Culture onto the session agenda.
In place of Bill 41.
In place of Bill 41. Senator Brown?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I just want to inquire of Speaker Trelawky in moving this as to why, if this is so urgent, why it was not already put on the agenda? Why are we doing this at this juncture? I mean, we've gone through such extents of trying to ensure we meet proper public notice requirements and having these documents ready for public review at the time of publication. So I'm just kind of curious if it's so important, why wasn't it already placed on the session agenda?
Thank you very much.
Previously.
Madam Speaker, do you yield to the question?
Certainly. This was brought up during the Committee of the Committee on Rules. It was placed on the potential items for the agenda as the committee report was being finalized and it had been finalized, routed, and uploaded by the clerks as is our process. So notice was absolutely given to the public that this would be put on the, or potentially put on the agenda and so I believe we are in compliance. And I actually don't think this is debatable at this point. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Senator Brown?
Well, Madam Speaker, I mean, I'm amazed at the tremendous extents we're making this legislature not to be able to discuss and deliberate on issues that are before the body, but I do want to note.
Point of order and point of personal privilege, Madam Chair.
Please state your point of order and personal privilege.
This is not the point to debate the bill. That bill, if it's placed on the agenda, will be debated on the second reading. So my motion is simply to place it on the agenda in place of another bill because we have time constraints on this bill and that other bill can wait.
Okay, thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
Madam Speaker, I'm not debating the bill. I'm debating the process under which the bill has been placed on the session agenda and I do want to note, and perhaps this can be further debated and discussed.
Thank you, Senator Brown. We do have your request for inquiry. It was answered and so this item is not debatable.
I understand, but from what the speaker had mentioned and my concern with regards to public notice, I mean, because she says it's been met, doesn't mean it's been met.
Senator Brown, this is not debatable. This is not a debatable motion.
It's amazing all the things, Madam Speaker, we're not able to debate on this floor and we continue to cut our ability to be able to speak.
There's been a motion to place Senator Brown. Senator Brown, you are out of order. On the motion to place Bill Number 229-36 as substituted by the Committee on Health, Land, Justice, and Culture on the session agenda, are there any objections?
I'm going to object, Madam Speaker, because I'm questioning the process under which public notice requirements are being met and also to ensure that these documents are ready for public review at the time of publication, which is not what the speaker said. So I'm going to object.
There has been an objection. All those in favor of placing Bill Number 229-36 LS on the session agenda, please raise your hand. Motion passes. We are still in motions. Senator Torres, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I have two motions. I'll begin with the first one. This is, Madam Speaker, I move to place into the session agenda Resolution Number 215-36COR introduced by Senator Talina Cruz Nelson, the prime author, Vice Speaker Tina Rose Munya Barnes, Senator Jose Pito Trelawky, Senator Joe S. Sinagastin, Senator Joanne M. Brown, Senator James C. Moilen and myself, Senator Mary Camacho Torres. This is relative to expressing the utmost support of Ilhaes La Torre Guahan for the passage of HR 5606, the Return Home to Housing Act, which seeks to amend Title 38 of the United States Code to adjust the rate of per diem payments provided by the Secretary of Veterans Affairs to grantees that provide services to homeless veterans and to further requesting parity and inclusion of all veterans residing in Guam and in all territories.
On the motion to place Resolution 215 on the session agenda. Hearing no objections. Motion passes. Senator Torres, you are still recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move to place into the second session agenda Resolution Number 234-36COR introduced by Talina Cruz Nelson, Tina Rose Munya Barnes, Clinton E. Rigel, Amanda L. Shelton v. Anthony Ada, James C. Moilen, Jose Pito Trelawky, Christopher M. Duñez, Therese M. Trelawky, Frank F. Blas Jr. and Sabina F. Perez. This is relative to expressing the utmost support of Amina Trentai Sais, Ilhaes La Torre Guahan, the 36 Guam Legislature, for S. 3284, the Veterans Assistance Helpline Act of 2021, which seeks to permanently establish a toll-free telephone helpline for veterans to use in order to quickly obtain information and assistance with all services from the U.S. Department of Veterans Affairs.
Thank you very much, Senator Torres. On the motion to place Resolution 234 on the session agenda. Hearing no objections, motion passes. We are in motions. Thank you very much. Speaker Trelawky, you are recognized. Speaker Trelawky, you are recognized.
We're on second reading.
We are in second reading now.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I move to place Bill Number 229-36 LS as substituted by the Committee on Health, Land, Justice, and Culture, which is an act to amend Section 75A 109C of Chapter 75A Title 21 and Section 4 of Public Law 35-112 and to add a new Chapter 6A of Title 18 Guam Administrative Rules and Regulations relative to complying with the legislative and administrative changes required under the settlement agreement made by and between the United States of America and the government of Guam, Chamaro Land Trust Commission and Administrative Director of the Chamaro Land Trust Commission, in the United States versus Government of Guam et al., District Court of Guam Civil Case 17-CV001113, as transmitted to Ilhaes La Torre Guahan by the Chamaro Land Trust Commission and to place it into the third reading file and I would like to speak on the bill.
Please proceed.
Thank you. So on, in September of 2017, the United States of America filed case against the Chamaro Land Trust Commission alleging, among other things, violations of the U.S. Fair Housing Act. The Office of the Attorney General, the CLTC, and the United States entered into a settlement conferences to resolve the lawsuit and concluded on November 14, 2019, a settlement term sheet that was agreed to in principle by their respective parties. In December 2019, the CLTC adopted Resolution 2019-08, which found the settlement terms in the agreement to be favorable for the Chamaro Land Trust program and its beneficiaries as it preserves the program intact and would not materially affect existing leaseholders. In addition, the commission found that the proposed modifications or amendments to the Chamaro Land Trust Act and the rules and regulations of the Chamaro Land Trust Commission would more clearly demonstrate that the Chamaro Land Trust program is a land restoration program meant to rectify the unjust taking of the Chamaro homelands by the United States federal government between 1898 and 1968 and would expand the program's eligible beneficiaries to include individuals and their descendants who owned land or who ranch, farm, or otherwise occupied the lands that were taken, unquote. So in May of 2020, after further settlement negotiations, the settlement agreement was signed and which resolves the allegations contained in the lawsuit. And Section C of the settlement agreement outlines the legislative and administrative changes to the Chamaro Land Trust Act and the rules and regulations of the Chamaro Land Trust Commission. So in the 35th Guam Legislature, we passed Bill 419, now Public Law 35-112, to approve that settlement and make changes to the Guam Code annotated, the Chamaro Land Trust law that were required by that settlement. In the law that we passed, Section 4 of Public Law 35-112 states that the Senator Paul J. Bredalia rules and regulations for the Chamaro Land Trust Commission enacted pursuant to 21GCA Chapter 75 are hereby enacted as rules and regulations applicable to 21GCA Chapter 75A, which was the new chapter that we enacted, except where inconsistent. The commission shall modify said rules and regulations as well as any sub regulatory rules, policies, practices, or guidance as necessary to be consistent with 21GCA Chapter 75A as enacted by that act. And so that is what we are here today to do. We are here to amend or enact further rules and regulations as suggested and recommended by the Chamaro Land Trust Commission and their lawyers so that the rules are consistent with the new law that is consistent with the settlement agreement. So all of these and their urgent manner, because of the government of Guam's commitment to putting all these things from the settlement agreement in place, you know, in a timely fashion. So the rules and regulations, my understanding, are the last piece of this settlement that we must enact. All right, so these rules and regulations came from the Chamaro Land Trust Commission, of course, with their lawyers and we had a public hearing on them. They, we have since public.
Madam Speaker, a point of information is the committee report uploaded already on the drive? I don't, I don't have a copy of the committee report.
The committee report is online on the legislature's website. The bill itself is on the drive.
I'm looking at the committee, I'm looking online on the legislative website and the committee report hasn't been uploaded yet.
It was uploaded into the motions folder. It is online on the legislature's website as well. Motions folder of our drive.
Unless I'm looking at the wrong website, it's not on the website.
Okay, we'll take a moment's recess.
Yeah, please, if we can. Yeah, please, if we can.
Elahesla Turanguahan is back from recess. We are experiencing some technical issues, so we'll give some time for our folks here to upload the committee report and make sure that it's in our drives and on the website for everyone to view.